Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started. It's right at six o'clock and I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight. I just wanna try to get some information out to the citizens. I understand that a lot of you probably just getting off work and running tasks and different things of that nature. So, we're gonna get started on this agenda here and we'll call this meeting to order. This is be the 2019 District Four City Hall Meeting. And we're gonna start off with an invocation by Pastor Raspberry followed by the present allegiance by Chief Brown.
Let's pray. Oh Father, we thank you for another day's journey. We thank you for the opportunity to come together to share in this great city of Ocoy. We thank you Father for allowing us to come together one more time to give thoughts and ideas and just meditate on the different things that you're doing in this great city to listen and to learn. We ask that you bring our hearts and our minds together to learn from one another on this evening. And we ask, Lord, to just be with us and just guide us through all decisions that are gonna be made in this city in the future and get our commissioners and our mayor and our fire department and our police department. We ask that you just be with everyone and protect them from all harm and danger during their daily tasks. We ask that you be with us, guide us, give us the strength for the journey you called us to. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the freedom which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First, let me thank you guys for coming out. I wanna thank the citizens that took the time to come out to learn more about what's going on in our city and figuring out how you may be able to get involved. So, I wanna recognize you for that, coming out and taking that time. I know it's not easy on a Thursday. Sometimes you've got the weather that we deal with and the traffic and all the other things to come out to a meeting like this. That just lets us all know that you guys really care about what goes on in our city. And we're here to provide you with information about what services we provide in the city for you as well as what projects we have going on in the city as well. I also wanna recognize the city leadership who's showed up at this meeting to come and talk about your services and things that you provide for the city. You guys do an awesome job. So, I wanna thank you so much for being here tonight. I also recognize our former city commissioner, Joel Keller, who has come by to say hi to us. Welcome to say a few words if you'd like, Joel. He also, he's on our Planning and Zoning Committee right now and he actually heads up the Planning and Zoning, which they're doing an awesome job. So, thank you so much for coming to visit us, Joel. Right. So, with that, I wanna kinda, really kinda dig right in into this thing. I wanna, wanna talk about some of the things that I've been doing in the city over the past year from last September to this September and some of the things that we have been discussing as a commission as a whole and the direction that the city is kinda going in. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive right into this thing here. And the first thing I wanna talk about is we're in the middle of our budgeting workshops right now. So, we're trying to balance our budget and I think we have a pretty good balance on it right now. Last year, our military rate was at five point five, five point five oh last year and this year we're, we're on track to get it down to about five point two, preventing that we may have to add some other capital items on there and it may go up as five to five point two nine percent. So, we're definitely working hard to keep your taxes, your military rate down and that's a thanks to the, our leadership and the direction they have us going in. So, some of the things that we talked about in the budgeting meeting, this is an opportunity for not only the citizens but the citizens to reach out to the commissioners and the mayor to talk about some of the things that you wanna see, some of the things that you wanna do in this city. And it allows us, gives us a platform that we're able to affect not only policy but also the dollars that go behind the policies, the dollars that you, the dollars that you see in the projects that goes on in our city. For me, I'm gonna go down a list of things that I have asked for in the budget, some things that I'm fighting for, some things that I would like to see in our current budget. One of the things, one of the biggest things that we have some, some difference of opinion in is I believe that the city should look into strategic planning. And what that means is strategic planning is, is a way for us to be able to identify who we are right now, where we're going in the future and how we're gonna get there in the future. With the strategic planning, we look at the city. The city of Ocoy is, I believe we are number seventy-eight, we're the seventy-eight largest city in the state of Florida. That means there's nine hundred cities throughout the state of Florida and we're number seventy-eight. So, that means we're not quite a small city, but we're not quite a large city. We're kinda somewhere in the middle there. But, if we look at history and we look at where we were ten years ago and look at it, look at the census of 2010 where we were at about thirty-seven thousand, thirty-four thousand citizens and now here we are at 2019, we're almost fifty thousand citizens. So, before you know it, we'll end up being, we're gonna cap out somewhere between seventy-five and eighty thousand citizens and that's not with annexation. That's just where we, the current capacity that we have right now. So, I say all that to say this. I say that strategic planning is gonna be very important. That means that we're gonna have to look at what are our core values? What is our mission? What is our vision for this city? And if we don't have those things, which we currently don't have right now anyway. So, it saddens me to say that a city this large does not have these things in place right now. So, I'm fighting to have these things put in place and it starts with the strategic planning. With the strategic planning, we also have to look at what we call risk assessments. A risk assessment will allow us to look at not only our personnel, look at our operations and look at our finance and we're able to determine where our risks are. And once we didn't make those determinations, then we can go into what's called an audit. We can start auditing ourselves. Now, when I start mentioning these things, some people don't like those things. Some people don't like to hear those things. So, I'm gonna be very transparent with you here today. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna play the political game. I'm actually gonna just be, I'm gonna be transparent. And there are some in the city that wanna keep us operating as if we were operating twenty-five years ago. And we cannot do that. There's just, there's no way we can do that. Things will change. Things will have to change and we are gonna be proactive toward it or we're gonna be reactive toward it. So far, we have been very reactive. I'll make, I'll give you a very, a case in point. If you see the snacks that we have out there, we have the water, the soda, we have the snacks. Do you know how to fight just to get that? That was a fight. That makes no sense to me when a city of this size, we don't have things in place that we're able to say, you know what, Commissioner Oliver's having a town hall meeting or they're having a joint town hall meeting with all the commissioners and the mayor, this is, this expense is gonna be covered because guess what? We have strategically planned to know that these things are gonna happen so we have budgeted money to do those things. So, we're still operating on a smaller scale than what we really are. So, I'm fighting for strategic planning in the city. I'm fighting for risk assessment in the city and I'm also fighting for a financial and operational audit of the city so we can determine our financial health, our operational health. We can determine all the opportunities that we are probably missing out on, maybe saving you thousands and thousands of dollars in your, your tax dollars. So, those are some of the things that I'm definitely fighting for. That's probably on the top of my list, but nonetheless, I believe that as a result of our meeting last night, most of the commissioners and the mayor did agree that these things need to happen. How we go about doing it, that's the next phase. Gotta figure out how we put an RFP out there to figure out, have a couple of companies come and approach us to talk about how we implement these things. We just can't just, just go out there and do it and spend thousands of dollars. It has to be done in a manner that is gonna be responsible to, not only to you and your tax dollars, but, but to everyone involved, the city, the people that operate this city. So, we are definitely looking at that and I believe we got a consensus last night which is a great milestone, not only for you but for us as well, to move forward in our risk assessment going into a city, a citywide audit. And I think that's, that's a great thing there. Other things that I've looked at is a traffic light on the corner of Ingram Road and Claricon Ocoy Road. That is a fairly new section there and we have a lot of kids that travel that road going back to the high school and back, new drivers. So, we are definitely looking at putting a light there. So, I'm fighting with the county and the city. It's definitely gonna be a fight. The county has agreed to allow us to put a light there, but they don't wanna put any money into it yet. So, the city, right now, we have earmarked some funds for it. It's about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which is gonna probably cost about four-hundred thousand dollars to do it. But, I'm, I would be going down to the county at one of their, their commission meetings and I will be petitioning them again about that light and putting funds out for that, that. Our current commissioner for District Two will be Commissioner Christine Moore. She is one of the largest budgets in the county as far as commissioners concerned. Come to find out, we haven't got any of that money yet, not in Ocoy. But, I'm, I will be fighting to get some of that money for the next budget cycle to start doing projects within our county, within, within our city. And that's one of the things I've dealt with. Also, one of the other things we're looking at is if you notice, there's a lot of construction going on in District Four. There's a lot of homes being built, single-family homes. There's a lot of construction. You see trucks going in and out. You see land being cleared. You see a little smoke going up here and there and it's happening all over District Four. And one of the things that I'm fighting for is a small budget to be able to get information to you. We can't have town hall meetings every quarter. I try to have at least once, once, maybe twice a year, but the most important thing to me is to get information to you about the infrastructure, how we're going to deal with these homes. In my district alone, in district, in your district, our district, we have close to almost a thousand homes being built. And if you average that out, you look at two cars per home, you almost, you're talking about a thou, two thousand cars is gonna hit the streets within the next few years. But, the good thing about that is the city's already planned on, we have contingency plans on how we're gonna deal with that, how we're gonna widen roads, how we're gonna make roads go straight through, how we're gonna change the timing of the traffic lights for our, for our trips. So, we've actually set up with plans like that. But, if you don't come to these meetings, you just don't know. Everyone doesn't come to these meetings. So, how do we get the information out to you? So, I'm fighting for just some type of budget that we're able to get flyers using social media and different things like that to get information out to you so you'll know in advance what's happening. You know the construction's going on, but how am I gonna get around when the traffic hits? So, we have these contingency plans and you're gonna hear a little bit about that tonight as well. Other things I'm looking at is discretionary funds for commissioners, discretionary budget funds. So, that means we have, there's a lot of organizations and different individuals that come to this diocese and they look for help doing different things, for scholarships. We have our high school, have different athletic events. They actually meet certain milestones where they go to the playoffs or they go to the runoffs or whatever it may be, championships. And they need money, they need funding and they come to us and, and we're able to fund some of those things. But, there's some things we just can't fund. So, we, we thought about, look at the way other cities operate. If you look at the city of Orlando and maybe city of Apopka and we look at some of the commissioners and they have discretionary budget funds. So, if someone comes to me and say, hey, you know, my kid made it to the regionals, but we're a hundred dollars or two-hundred dollars off from sending them on a trip, I would able, I'll be able to go into a discretionary fund and be able to write a check from the city and say, hey, you know, here's the money you need to do that without them coming to the diocese and standing before the commission and asking for two-hundred dollars. Again, it goes right back to what I said before, that's strategic planning. When you have a city that's operating on a strategic plan, these things are already put in contingencies. We already thought about these things. These things are already ready to go and all we have to do is just simply hit a switch and it, and it goes as opposed to going through all of this just to get two-hundred dollars or going through all of this so you can have snacks and water for a meeting. It, it makes sense. Also, just wanna give you an update on our youth projects. Last year, we started the Ocoy Youth Council. Right now, we have about six students and I believe the seventh one will be signing up within the next week. And what the Ocoy Council is, it is a group of youth in our city, high school age kids from eighth grade going through twelfth grade that gets involved. They're, they're an advisory board. So, they're able to, to make decisions when it comes to youth involvement in the city and they bring them back to us in the diocese for considerations. So, it is a real board and we encourage our youth. We have a total of fifteen slots and we have filled like seven of them. So, if you know any youth that's interested in getting involved in city government and understanding how city government works, the municipalities, please have them go to the Ocoy website and have them sign up for the Ocoy Youth. And there's a lot of different volunteer events that they'll be a part of as well as different projects that they're gonna be taking on. We also took them this year to the Florida League of Cities that was held out at the Marriott World Center this year and they were able to meet other youth throughout the state of Florida and they were talking about different projects that they're doing and engaged in. And I, I was out there with them all weekend. I was able to see them engage with other youth. They were exchanging phone numbers, talking about ideas and it's, it was just wonderful to see them engage that way in our city. So, we definitely want to encourage them to join that program if they have the time to do so. Also, I wanna, I wanna talk a little bit about, I hate sitting down talking, but we talked a little bit about, I can stand over here. Talked a little bit about the growth in the city and I wanted to give you just an idea of what that, that growth looked like. So, we created a little PowerPoint presentation for you so we can talk about and show you what these, these things that we're doing here in the city that you're probably familiar with some of them and some of you may not be familiar with. Oops. There we go. Alright, so, right here, this right here, if you, you noticed that and I'll show you what, what way we are. This right here, there you go. Right here, very familiar road, that's Silver Star. But, it looks like a lot, look like a highway. But, if you notice over here in this area right here, that's the Ocoy Reserve. That's the new subdivision that's being built right next to the Publix. And then you have a large tract of land there and within that reserve, I'm gonna kinda go a little bit through this. Within that reserve, you'll see this little plot of land right here. This is all gonna be commercial. So, you have about a hundred homes and you have a small commercial area right there. And one of the big things I always hear is, we're gonna get some sit-down restaurants in Ocoy. Well, you know what? This little tract of land right here could accommodate that. This is what we have to do. As commissioners, the things that we have to do is we gotta get outside the box. We have to get outside the little city here and stop waiting on people to come to us. We have to go to them. I just did a visit to Tarpon Springs, Florida a couple of weeks ago. I met the mayor, the city manager and their city planner and they have formed strategic partnerships with small cities in Greece and they have actually revitalized their entire downtown area. So, I talked to them about those ideas and bringing it, those kind of things, types of things to Ocoy. I spoke with Craig and Rob about those things and they, they really liked the idea of strategic planning, liked the idea of being able to take this and have someone come in and bring some private money in from another country to build a sit-down restaurant or, or a couple of sit-down restaurants. So, these are some of the things that we're doing in the city. So, we're not just building and, and not thinking about what we're doing. With that strategic plan, we'll be able to be a little bit more comprehensive about how we go about doing it. Okay, I gotta go the other way. That's another view of that, that same, that same tract of land. That's, that's, this is just the, the commercial part of the retail section of it right there. And then you have a aerial view of this right here. You probably don't recognize that, that right there from the aerial view. That's Silver Star again and then you have what's called the Ocoy Reserve. The Ocoy Reserve is that, that area that you see as you're leaving out of Ocoy heading toward the Orlando area. It'll be on the right-hand side and you'll see them building all over here in this area here. So, we have a lot going on in, in a very, probably like a, maybe a four or five block radius. And this is just another view, another aerial view of that same, that same area. And there it is again. And as you can see, when I first looked at this, it was, there was nothing there. They just cleared the land off and sat there for a couple of months. The first house right here went up and shortly after, a few months later, it, this came about. And they'll build them rapidly. So, they're actually will, they're poised to, to be done probably toward the end of the year.
Yep.
And people, have they started moving in already?
I don't know if you've seen COZ on any of those.
Okay. They'll be coming shortly. And right here, this is another subdivision here that you're probably familiar with, but maybe not from the aerial view. This is Ingram Road right here. Along Ingram Road, you have all of this subdivision here. This is all Alden Park North. And as you can see, they're building rapidly. They're moving very fast. This is kinda like a, like an inventory that they got going or, or an assembly line type setup that they got going on here. So, you can see the traffic that's gonna happen in this particular area from Ingram Road going back all the way to Claricon. You can see what's gonna happen when these are finally built out and you can see what's gonna happen with the, the traffic that's gonna happen with that, that final build-out. Again, that's Alden Park North, that's another view of Alden Park North. Again, with Ingram Road being right here, it goes all the way back over to Claricon that way. And there it is again, there's another view of it. And that's also Alden Park North as well. And there's another view of it. So, you can see just how large it really is. That is a very large build-out development that's coming up in the city there. And one of the great things I love about this, about Alden Park is when they approached us about Phase Four, Five and Six, they also approached us and we talked about taking Clark Road and running it all the way through McCormick. That's gonna relieve some of that, that traffic, which is, which is a great thing there. So, with that large subdivision, that will relieve some of the traffic. That's a part of the, the planning that the, that the leadership has, has brought forth for us. This one right here, this is a subdivision that's actually going in District One. This is green at, at Forest Lake. This is a part of District One. So, you can see that District One and District Four butt right up against one another and that means that they're going to, traffic is going to affect both districts, District One and District Four. We talked about the northern part of our city and again, that's another large subdivision that's coming and it'll be here really soon. And again, we talked about encroaching upon fifty thousand residents. So, think about all these different subdivisions, think about all the different developments that's going on and think about the number of people that, that's, that's gonna house these different spaces. We have some great plans for these, these areas. I've seen some of the layouts and I, I think that they're wonderful, but my whole thing is the infrastructure. We have to start focusing more on the infrastructure and the way we do that, we do it by getting involved. You get involved at, at the citizen level, you come to these meetings, you join the different boards and you get involved and you can affect change at a very low level as far as boots on the ground. I have seen six people come into this diocese and make a change that, that affected almost three-hundred thousand dollar change that we're gonna make a decision on. And six people walked in here and stood right here and changed all of our minds about, I wasn't here that night, but, but changed the minds, the mindset just because they came to speak up and they got involved. And that's what I'm here to tell you. Getting involved makes things happen around here. Alright, so, I'm gonna go through this real quickly and that's another, another look at it. There's another look at it. There's the Preserve at Crown, which is also part of District One. And there's, this is actually, this is the CRA and we actually have Ginger Collins who should be talking about the CRA and what that means to our city and the wonderful things that they've been doing with our city, the beautification along Fifty, the businesses that's going along Fifty, all of those retail businesses that's going up there, the new, like we got the smoothie place and there's like a chicken place and the other places going up. That's because of our CRA. We have a whole team that actually is dedicated just to that and they have brought in millions of dollars into our city because of this, this beautification, these, these things here. This right here is looking at a picture of Top Gun, that, that's right, Top Gun cheer. This is like a large international cheering organization that's right here in our city that's gonna be bringing competitions to our city, it's gonna be bringing people into our city. We have a large baseball organization that's coming into the city, that's bringing in tournaments and those kinda things. What does that mean to us? That's tax dollars. It also means it's gonna fill up our hotels with the one hotel we do have, with two, we have two, the Red Roof Inn and we also have the Fair Friend. It's gonna fill up our hotels. It's gonna show we have a demand and need for more hotels, more space and we actually do have the space to accommodate that. And there's the, there's apartments right there on Fifty and Blueford and you'll see all of that there. And here is another picture of that CRA area. This is the new buildings here. If you can see that, these buildings are fairly new here. Here's land that we have that can be developed into a retail space as well as hotel accommodations, restaurants, those kinda things. So, we have the space to do it and, and we have the team that, that can actually deliver it and make it happen. And there's just, just some more pictures there and I'm just gonna go through them quickly 'cause we wanna kinda move along. But, that's another, that's another view of Highway Fifty and Maguire. So, it's Fifty and Maguire, that intersection, there's the new buildings that's being put up and that's just another view of that, that particular area of the CRA. And of course, Health Central Buildings and Medical Buildings there, that's one of our newer buildings in the city and we're actually very proud of these, these projects here. And things are just rapidly moving in our city. And again, I just wanna say to you as I just kinda go through these, these photos here, that as you can see, if you were here in this city fifteen, twenty years ago, all these things that I just showed you didn't exist. But, now here we are, 2019 and these things exist. So, ten, fifteen more years, what is our city gonna look like? With the proper strategic planning and the right people in place, it's gonna look not only better than that, but we're gonna start drawing people from all over the United States to come to the city of Ocoy and enjoy the amenities that we have for them and the things that we have to offer 'cause we definitely have the ability to, to make things happen in the city. So, with that being said, I'm gonna move on in the agenda and I want to bring up some of our leadership who's here tonight and I want them to talk a little bit about the services they provide for the city and some of the things that they, that they're capable of doing. And first, we're gonna probably start with the Police and Fire Department. Oh, you wanna start Craig? No, I'm sorry. I got the wrong agenda, yeah. We're gonna start from, from the very top. So, we're gonna start with our, our leadership from a city manager's office, Assistant City Manager Craig Shadrick. He's gonna come and address, address us with the things that's going on upstairs.
And I'll try to be as brief as I can. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Commissioner Oliver. This is one of the good things that comes with being in this business is being able to interact with citizens. And that's something we don't get to do often enough, so when we get these opportunities, it's a great way for us to get to know you better and understand what your issues are. My office, I, I am the Assistant City Manager. Again, my name is Craig Shadricks. I am the number two guy. I work for the city manager who actually works for our four commissioners and mayor. And so, our role in the city manager's office is managing the day-to-day operations of the city. So, that includes managing all the departments and handling complaints. I will tell you, we have a great management team and it's always great to have fresh new ideas coming in. We've all been very committed to engaging in discussions about all the new ideas and seeing how we can turn that around and make the city even better. But, one thing, there's, there's several things I wanna cover, but for the sake of time, I'm gonna try to be brief to touch on. One thing is accessibility. We want you to feel accessible in, in our role in the city manager's office. You should be getting callbacks from departments that you contact with issues. If you don't, then keep calling up the food chain. Rarely ever happens and all of our management here tonight will tell you straight up that it doesn't happen very often, that, that I get a phone call, that someone didn't call them back. So, we want to be accessible to you. We are very busy. As Commissioner Oliver stated, we are growing. This is the fastest growth spurt this city's ever had, the one we're in right now, even faster than the one that occurred during the early two thousands. And so, all the things that he mentioned are very important as we move forward. We don't wanna be sloppy with our growth. We wanna be, be reasonable and manage it well. But, we want to be accessible to our public. So, we have a great website. We're always looking to improve it, but there are numerous contacts on that website and if you have an issue, we wanna hear it. And I'm saying that as sincerely as I can. Now, with respect to growth and development, my little thirty-second speech on economic development is, is as follows. We are working more aggressively than ever to try to bring new businesses to the city. Love the idea of engaging in some international relations to try and bring economic growth to the city. We have a series of, of major events that staff and myself attend every year. We've been to three or four this year in the last three months. And we're out there meeting with the big companies that control the retailers, like, for example, there's a management company that will, that will represent Costco and all the little retailers that you'll see in line with a Costco or a Sam's or something like that, quality sit-down restaurants. Who in here would like to see more restaurants to go to? Get those hands up. We're actively working on that and one of the things that helps us is, is the numbers keep getting better. We have a very educated group of people living in our city now, a very professional group of people that demands better services and that, that's very helpful. And the more often that you reach out to us about, "We really need more restaurants. What can I do?" I actually just, and this is a true story, Mike Rumor will tell you, I was at a retail conference recently and there's a little grocery store chain called Lucky's. It's a very neat concept. I was meeting with the Lucky's rep. He was like, "Well, no, I've already been to Ocoee, uh, I don't, I don't think it'll work." And we were pushing him towards the corner at Maguire and Fifty. Now that is a very high-dollar site. And I was like, "Well, why?" He goes, "Well, I've been around to most of your businesses and I just don't know that, you know, that's the gr-" I was like, "People aren't coming." I said, "Your data set is flawed that you're basing that decision on. People are not coming, um, to, to places that aren't there." I was like, "If you put a Lucky's here in Ocoee, I guarantee you, you will meet all of your market demands." And I ended up letting him beat me in Cornhole, um, at the event and he's agreed to come out and meet with us. But that's just a little taste of the, the environment out there. But the, the, the way economic development works is we've gotta bring in quality employment. People with good jobs have disposable income. So we're working on the jobs. Our commission's been great. Uh, we have added more jobs in the last three years than we have in the last twenty years prior. We have some great major employers in town, but employment drives everything else. People that have good disposable income wanna live in good housing. People that have good disposable income wanna have better places to eat and shop. So we're really working that angle very hard. And that doesn't mean that we're trying to ignore everyone else either. We are work, we, we actually have an element in our comp plan on affordable housing. That's something that we're constantly monitoring. Um, and we, we want to represent adequately the entire cross-section of our population. One last thing I'll, I'll touch on, cause I've already gone over the time I allotted for myself. Infrastructure is very important and we have a comp plan that has a future land use map that says, "This is what the future growth of the city looks like." And we have to be able to prove how we're gonna provide services to accommodate the growth on that map. And there's one common misnomer and Commissioner Oliver touched on it briefly, but in the current climate, I wanna encourage you all to, to talk to our staff, talk to our Development Services Department, talk, call in, uh, and, and get educated on it. A lot of the infrastructure problems we have are not ours. That doesn't mean we're without, we're not without problems. But we have a lot of county roads that the county has control over. You have a Commissioner named Christine Moore, if you're in Commissioner Oliver's district. And he's absolutely right. She has a, the, one of the larger discretionary funds. We haven't gotten any of that money. And we need to all be banding together in the appropriate manner, asking the county to, to, don't forget about West Orange County, especially Ocoee. And what's gonna be coming up in the, in the, the news in the near future is a one-cent sales tax that's being considered. And it's mainly gonna deal with three things. One is Sun Rail, which doesn't help us at all because we're not in the Sun Rail quarter. The other is Lynx, which we are. And if we want to have some specific Lynx projects we'd like to see, now's the time for us to be vocal about them. And the third thing is perhaps the biggest thing for us because we get complaints, the Commissioners get the complaints about all the new trips going on our roadways. Well, when Mr. Rumor, who you're gonna meet in a minute, um, is evaluating a development project that's on an Orange County road, the county reviews that project and determines what improvements have to be made to accommodate that development and they work with us. So we need to be more vocal with the county on some of those. And I will tell you, our, our Commissioners, every single one of them have been very vocal with us about trying to maximize our dollars on our infrastructure. But we've, that doesn't mean we don't need to be very vocal, uh, when it comes to the county. And we need to all be pushing to have projects that are in Ocoee added into that one-cent sales tax. I am in the middle of a major effort with the City Manager. Each of our Commissioners is also working with their counterparts at the county, but the message is very clear and simple. We need projects for our voters and if I'm, I'm not telling you all how to vote, but I'm just telling you historically on these things, if you're not gonna benefit from it, why, you know, why should I have to pay more for, you know, a six-pack of soda at the store when that extra penny sales tax is, is going somewhere else in the county? So if they want it to pass, that, that's kinda the message that we're, we're preaching to them right now is we need some of that money. We can make a lot of the infrastructure issues disappear very quickly if they take the appropriate formula and apply it to, um, its apportionment. And that's all I really wanted to cover. Um, we take great pride in the city. We're constantly, constantly looking to evolve ourselves and change for the better as, as the environment changes. This is not the city it was thirty years ago. And we encourage you to please reach out to us and, uh, we wanna be accessible. Thank you.
Thank you Craig. And, uh, just to kinda piggyback a little bit on the, that one-cent sales tax that you're gonna start hearing more about is I, I met with the, uh, with the County Mayor as well as, uh, the Chief Financial Officer and I talked to him about, about that as far as, uh, possibly supporting that as long as we can get, we're talking about billions of dollars and we're talking about some of that money coming to the city of Ocoee to deal with infrastructures, deal with some of their roads and some, some of the projects that we have going on in the city. So, uh, again, I've spoken with them about it. They, uh, support, uh, Ocoee, uh, but we also have to continue to be vocal about that. If we're gonna support the one cents, that, that we get money earmarked. Uh, not just a, a handshake and a, and a, and a promise, a wave and a nod and a wink, but we want something in writing. We want earmarked money that's gonna come here as a result of that one-cent tax, so. Next with Police Chief Brown.
Hello, everyone. I am, uh, Charles Brown, the Chief of Police and I live in District Four. And so our district will be the safest district in, uh, Ocoee. But, um, I may not look like it, but I'm the old-timer in Ocoee. I have been here twenty-seven years. When I started, we had about, um, less than thirteen thousand residents. We had less than thirty police officers. This year in the budget, if, if the Commission, uh, so approves it, we will go to one hundred police officers. And it's my job to make sure that people do wanna come here and live, make sure they wanna come here and, um, work and make sure they're gonna eat, drink, socialize in our, uh, in our city because it's gonna be the safest city in, in, um, Orange County, I hope. So we are talking about all this growth. One of the things that we did just earlier this year is we, um, in order to properly, efficiently manage our police department, the Commission approved a new analytic, uh, I guess it's a, uh, program that it takes all of our data from the last five years and analyzes where it predicts that crimes will happen. Our city is made up of five zones that our police officers, um, patrol. Each of those zones, we find the hotspots through this analytic, uh, program. Those officers are required to be in those hotspots a certain amount of time for each shift. So, because if that's where it's gonna happen, then they should be there. Um, we are very young in the data, but as of right now, we're somewhere between nine and twelve percent reduction in crime in our, each of the zones. So that's a good thing. And we're hoping to continue to work on that. Some of the zones, if you call in and you say you're having a problem in an area, we can move those boxes within the zones to make it so the officers will come and, um, patrol that area. So it isn't just the analytics. We can, it can be driven by the citizens. So we need your input when you're having problems in your area. Um, I wanted to make sure that you were aware that that was going on and that's how we are, um, properly patrolling all the areas. We, we take a lot of data in, um, and we, we're data-driven when we patrol the, the zones. Um, with that hundred officers, this year, eight officers will be new officers. Four of those are going to schools. We have seven traditional schools, two charter schools in the city of Ocoee. That's a, one of the bigger areas, a smaller city with a bigger amount of, uh, schools than any, most of the Orange County, um, cities our size. Um, that will put our school population, I would say, to twelve police officers in schools. Twelve percent of my police force has to deal with the schools. And, um, that's good 'cause the children being safe is a, is a big deal. The School Board does provide money. We've been negotiating over the years and got it up to a little over half of their salaries are paid for by the School Board. And, um, all the schools are covered one hundred percent of the time that the school is open from bell to bell every day in the city of Ocoee. So we have relief for those and supervision for those, um, SROs. And the last thing I wanted to talk about, one thing that's just getting ready to happen in October, um, we will be accredited for the first time in, um, the city of Ocoee. Uh, we've gone through a very strenuous process. It involves building all of our policies, all of our personnel, all of our equipment. It was a one-year, it, it's, is much longer than one year, but we had to take one year of data, have assessors come in from FDLE and the, um, Florida Commission on Accreditation. Um, and they looked at all, every part of our business process. And October second, we go in front of the Commission, the Board, to get accredited. And, uh, it's gonna be a big day in Ocoee. It's a, it's a very prestigious thing to be accredited. I'd say less than half the agencies in the state of Florida are accredited. And, um, it comes from the support of the citizens as well as the Commission. So that's a big deal. You, you do not have to be accredited in the state of Florida yet. Um, you have to be certified, but not accredited. And accredited is that, one, one more step. So those are the main topics I wanted to touch on and, uh, I'll be here the rest of the time.
Awesome.
One thing, um, we, we like a lot of involvement. We do have a, uh, sorry, Fire Chief, you have to wait a minute. We always go in before the fire. Make sure it's safe because that truck full of guys that are coming in are, um, but we have a Facebook page. It's very active. We have, uh, over seven thousand. Do we have eight thousand yet? Not yet. We're pushing, trying to get eight thousand followers. We have over seven thousand followers. Um, I have tasked my Deputy Chief, who's in the back, to do at least two posts a day. That's a lot of data coming out and it's a lot of information coming out. Get on there, interact, make sure you're paying attention to what we have going. Every time we have, uh, traffic issues in there, all the crime issues in there, anything having to do with school openings, um, summer breaks, so, um, Facebook is, um, Ocoee Police Department is our Facebook page. So get on there and, um, follow us. That's it.
Yep. Thank you, thank you so much, Chief. And, um, uh, just a little caveat, uh, about the Police Department. One of the things that I really like about the Police Department is the fact that, uh, if you, uh, live in an area where there's maybe not gated and you want packages delivered, you can have them delivered to the Police Department. You can pick them up right there. Uh, if you have, um, let's see, you wanna sell vehicles and you wanna meet someone to look at your vehicle, you can do it right in the Police Department parking lot. And, and they, they accommodate the citizens, uh, in tho- in those regards as well. It's a great thing. And also I, I do, I'm, I'm sorry. I mean to put you on the spot. But, uh, right before the hurricane, uh, we, we were having the, um, the, um, thoughts that Hurricane Dory was gonna hit us and, uh, it was looking, um, too bad it hit Alabama first, but I'm, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself. I'm so sorry. But, but nonetheless, as I was going through our website, I found the Code Red. There's an app that we have in the city that I downloaded. It's run by the, the, um, Police Department. You can sign up for this app and you can get emergency information about almost anything that goes on in the city that pertains to emergency and emergency information in the city. You can, you can get all this information. So that Code Red is great. I signed it for it. I signed my wife up for it. It's a great program. It's just a way to get information out to citizens, uh, rapidly as we deal with, uh, any type of emergencies that we go through. Thanks, Chief.
Commissioner, thank you.
Our Chief.
I'm gonna pull this knife out of my back here for the Police Chief, but you too can drop packages off at the fire station. If it's food, we'll eat it for you. Don't worry about it. But, uh, in all honesty, we, as, uh, Mr. Shadrick mentioned, we appreciate you putting together this Town Hall meeting because we can't make it to every association meeting and sometimes, you know, some associations don't meet frequently. So we, this is a way for us to get out to the community, uh, you know, in a uniform fashion. So my name is John Miller. I'm the Fire Chief here. Uh, I spent twenty-seven years in Orlando, retired and was fortunate enough to be hired here about four and a half years ago. And, uh, I, I can let you know that you are in great hands here in Ocoee. We've done a lot of great things. I know, uh, the Chief has mentioned that they are accredited and, uh, the Ocoee Fire Department has been internationally accredited for the last couple of years. Uh, we're also an ISO one fire department, which is the insurance, your insurance rates are based on how good this fire department is. So your insurance rates are very low because, or are much lower because we are an ISO one department, which is one-tenth of one percent of the entire country. Out of forty-five thousand fire departments, we're one-tenth of one percent in it, that have one, an ISO one. So we're doing great things. We're supported by our city and our Commission. We have, um, our entire fleet is, is less than five years old, very good shape. Our personnel are excellent. Many have been trained in, uh, as paramedics in the last few years. Uh, all of them are advanced life support units. So every unit that comes to your house has the ability to start IVs, to defibrillate your heart, to intubate you for oxygenation, to pretty much do everything, give medications. So when you see one of those red trucks coming, you know we can do it all, put out the fire and take care of your life safety issue and many other things, cat in the trees and things like that. Couple of important things that have gone on right now is we just started transport in January. So before you, you remember, uh, Health Central used to do transports and transport the patients, uh, the citizens. Uh, and then we went to ambulance company, another private ambulance company when they, when, uh, Health Central stopped doing that. Well, the Commission and the city approved for the Fire Department to do transport, which is, which is this pretty much the standard now in the United States is the fire service. We're already in your neighborhood. We're right down the street. We come, we're paramedics. So now we just do that full continuity of patient care. We take care of you. We don't hand you off to somebody else. We take you straight to Health Central, Florida Hospital downtown, to the trauma center, to the OB centers, whatever, whatever is necessary. We have the facilities, uh, you know, the equipment and the personnel to do so. The other important thing to note is that in the northwest side of town, I know most of you are probably in the northeast area, but you do, I don't know if you know, but your fire station's on Clark Road just north of eighty MEMS. But when they're not available, you get the fire station here from Blueford, twenty-five, or you get the Fire, uh, Department on the northwest corner by the Publix in the Publix Plaza. So we have been approved, I believe, or it's very close if it hasn't been approved, to, well, we've been approved to move forward on a fire station design and plan for the northwest. It'll likely be right near the Publix there at West Road and, um, Ocoee, Apopka, somewhere in that area. So for anybody who lives in the Arden Park area, anything, you know, pretty much halfway between, between Clark Road and there, both those, uh, stations will, will support you and, you know, if one of the units is out, the others come. So that is good news for the city. So we'll have four fire stations and, uh, better coverage area for your services. So we run about six or seven thousand calls a year. Uh, about three thousand to thirty-five hundred of them are actually transports to the hospital. They end up being transported to the hospital. So you wanted to, me to mention a few community-driven things that we do. So I, I put down, we have a Fire Explorer program. I know Commissioner, uh, Oliver is very big on the youth in this community. And, uh, so our Explorer program is from age fourteen to twenty-one. It can be high school students or just finishing high school. We meet every month. We have Explorer Advisors. It's part of the, uh, Boy Scouts of America. So you, it's like a twenty-five dollar fee and, uh, you're part of the Boy Scouts program. They meet, they train, learn, they learn, they become, you know, it's, it's very, uh, formalized. They have their meetings. They have their President, Vice President, Secretary Treasurer. They learn the culture of being organized, professionalism, being well-kept. They get uniforms that, similar to what we wear. They get to ride on the fire apparatus. They learn skills. They may not be firefighters. They may end up being emergency medical technicians, paramedics, nurses. They may go off to be lawyers and doctors and, you know, whatever you may envision them to be. But it gets a good grounding and foundation, keeps them out of trouble, keeps them focused. Um, they learn, you know, learn what's going on and what, what we do in the community, the public safety. So that is available. All you have to do is contact us. We have about ten or eleven right now. Um, most of them in high school. We've hired explorers in the fire service. Some of them gone onto other fire departments as well. So it's a great program and you may not have been aware of. Our citizen public safety, that's for you. Uh, we partnered up with the Police Department. They were doing it a few years before us and so Police and Fire now, ten-week program. You all come, you sign up. We, we do about forty or fifty people a year. You sign up and for ten weeks, you learn what the fire and police do. You go to our fire stations, our police stations, the, the jail, uh, you know, just the fire training grounds. You learn what we do, how we do it, how our, your government works, how we're, how everything works. So I encourage you to look at it. It's on the website and we put it out, I believe, twice a year. Uh, smoke detector program. I don't know if you know, we have a smoke detector program. If you call and you don't have a smoke detector or your neighbor, elderly neighbor doesn't If you call and you don't have a smoke detector, or your neighbor, elderly neighbor doesn't have one, all you have to do is call us, we just register, make sure you're in the city. We come out, and we help you install a smoke detector. We partner with the Red Cross, and we do smoke detector blitz. Like, for example, not too long ago, we did it in PK 1 and 2, the trailer communities that are here. And we do a big blitz, and we'll take 30 or 40 people, go to every house, knock on the doors, see if they had a smoke detector, have them sign up for it, and we install it right there for them. So, we can do that in your community. If you have seniors, or you have concerns, or there's one neighbor that you know probably is not taking care of themselves or helping themselves, we come out and help do that. Not a problem, so just contact us. CPR and AED programs. We teach CPR every month at the fire department, so you just sign up and come down and learn CPR. We do it in the community, we do it for Chick-fil-A, Cisco. And we try to have that community business and residential relationship. So, we try to partner up, teach them how to use the fire extinguisher, how to do CPR, how to use their AED, they may be on their wall, they have no idea how to use. So, we do a lot of outreach that way. You may have heard about our Operation Santa, where we go around with the fire truck and this big giant Santa sleigh. We don't, we give out candy, but we take presents. People donate the unwrapped presents, and then the police department uses them for the drive, for the needy and those less fortunate to do. So, we do a lot of good things besides run the emergency calls. I think you know those kind of things we do. We do blood pressure checks, come to the station, we'd be glad to do a blood pressure check. We have a Sharps and buyer hazard program. If you're a diabetic or know somebody that has medical issues, and they have waste that you need to get rid of, that's medical-type things, we can also help you with that. Just give us a call and make sure it's, you know, things that we can take. And, of course, we are your emergency management team. So, when you have a hurricane and you're worried about what's going on, are we safe, is the city ready? We are the emergency management team that puts together our operations center to make sure the community is protected and communicated well with. So, that's the short, fast version of the fire department.
Thank you. Also, when is your open house?
We do our open house, we try to do it in the springtime. So, we've moved it up, we're going to try and do it in March, where it's a little cooler. But, we had, I think, over 400 people at our last open house, and it was fantastic.
I encourage you to go to the open house, it is a wonderful event, it's a great event, and you learn a whole lot more about what they do for the city and the services they provide.
And we are allowed to give out food at that event, sir. Cotton candy, ice cream, everything.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, as long as they're in the proper containers, we take them and just, we have a program to do that. And we give you a new Sharp's box after. Yep, you sure do. Yep? Yes, we've been doing it back again for a few years, but just call us anytime, you know, instead of driving down somewhere, just call, make sure we're open, and you could do that.
Are you charged a fee as far as if you pick up someone that's sick? Just like maybe the rule of ambulance and those, there will be a fee that will be charged. Do you charge a fee through the fire department?
Yes, ma'am. You talking about to go to the hospital?
Right.
For transport, yes. Our fees, the private ambulance that used to be here, we do it for less than what they were charging. We do it the same as what the rest of Orange County. Like, if Orange County was to come over from their Station 42 down the road and transport, it's the same price. Yeah. Everybody in the state, pretty much, you know, in order to help pay for things, there is a fee, and the insurance typically would, you know, cover that fee.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you all.
Next, we're going to hear from our city clerk. You'll get to find out what the city clerk does in the city.
Good evening, my name's Melanie Sibid, I'm the city clerk for Acoe. If you guys, if anyone attends the city commission meeting, I'm usually the person behind that big monitor in that corner, so this is my first time being at this podium. As far as the city clerk's office, we offer a wide range of services to the citizens, elected officials, as well as city staff. Our responsibilities include administration of the election, public meeting notices, legal advertisements, management of records, and administration of the Acoe Cemetery. We also do the coordination for public records requests, and coordination for the volunteers' appointments to the city advisory boards. And I do see a couple board members here in the audience. Currently, there are openings on our advisory boards, and you can find that information on our website. We do have the application, as well as the waiver form, as there are a couple boards that do require background check in order for you to participate in the events. My office also is in, we oversee the election. As the elected officials, newly elected officials that are here would tell you, I know them as the candidates prior to the swearing, their swearing-in and actually taking seat at the dais. Luckily, we do not have an election this year, which we're excited about, because we had two back-to-back elections, and it is really strenuous. As far as the Acoe Cemetery, I'm not sure if many residents know that we actually have a city cemetery, but there is a city cemetery in Acoe, it's located off of Geneva Street. Currently, there aren't any plots available, but we do have niches in the columbarium. We have information in our office, and I believe that, you know, eventually we'll be adding some more columbariums. And it's, you know, it's great to have for the city. We do have residents who are always calling, looking for a burial site near home. Public records requests, our office deals with all public records requests. So, that's if you're looking for anything that you want a copy of, that you know, whether it's minutes, building plans, any documents that the city may have, we, that would be routed through our department, and we would assist in getting those to you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Next, Mike Rumer is going to talk about our capital investment program.
Yes, thank you. Mike Rumer, I'm the city planner over at Development Services. Appreciate this opportunity to get to kind of explain some things to you, and then help enlighten you some. The capital improvement program is a major tool that's used. It's a five-year plan for capital improvements for such things as major buildings, to upgrade or build parks and recreational facilities, enhance the Withers McGuire House, new city buildings functions. You also have roads and stormwater, police facilities. This capital improvement plan is one of the major tools that we use to develop the budget every year. Some of the general fund dollars, and some of the enterprise funds from the utilities, are planned for five years on what capital improvements, an improvement that is above a certain threshold or a permanent structure, how that's going to be implemented in the future. We use this, we base this on current needs, we also base it on future planning. We know that a planned program such as a road widening or resurfacing is going to be needed to be made in the future. So, we can plan that out in year four or year five, and try to find the funding for that improvement as we go through the budgets the next three years. We also use this tool, and we receive, and we review new developments. If there's a new development that is brought forward to us, they want to develop in an area that does not have water or sewer, we can look in the capital improvement plan and say, oh, yes, we have a lift station, and we have some new sewer lines that are going to be in place in four years. If you'd like to come through before then, you're going to have to upfront and pay for some of those, and we can work out a deal that's kind of credit use for some of that construction. The capital improvement program is also a requirement of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a state-mandated 20-year plan that the city goes through. When Commissioner Oliver talks about the 70, 80,000 residents, our 20-year plan says, we're going to plan to expect 70,000, 80,000 residents. We have long-term vision, we have ideas and plans in the comprehensive plan to widen roads, add new roads, schools, police, fire, recreation. We implement that through this five-year capital improvement plan. And every year, when this plan, which gets adopted with the budget, we update the comprehensive plan with this updated capital improvements plan. A developer will, when they're looking at property, they'll look at the comprehensive plan, they'll pull the element, and they'll look at our capital improvements plan to see what's going on, to make sure the area that they're looking to purchase land or develop is able to handle those facilities. The capital improvement plan covers things, as I said, from street sweeping, road repaving. And the capital improvement plan, as I said, is a five-year plan. Year one, the next fiscal year, is pretty much usually funded. There might be some fundings from general fund, there might be some funding from a developer contribution or some other fees. Year two through beyond may not be funded, but they, we know where that funding is going to come from, and that'll drive the next budget cycle. Say, hey, we've added three more streets for repaving, and there were 75,000, so next year, we got to put 85,000. That's how, the initial part of how we set up the budget that we present, the city manager's office presents to the commission.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike.
And I'll come back.
Appreciate it. Come back.
I get the privilege of being over the planning department and the building division, planning division and building division in site engineering. And with that, we review long-range plans, which roads are going to need to be widened in the future. We have a data analysis that tells us that information, such as population projections. We also review current planning, we review site plans for new, the new, all this new development, the Arden Park, the Acoe Reserve. We review subdivisions and commercial site plans. We also annex property in. When property meets state law, we go, we take it through a process to bring it into the city, and let it start paying city taxes, let our code enforcement deal with it. We also rezone property and change, and we'll look at land use on property. Somebody may have a piece of property that's a remnant piece of agriculture, and they want to put townhomes on it. We facilitate the process of rezoning it, of course, using our capital improvement plan and our comprehensive plan. You've seen in this little report, the presentation that Commissioner Oliver did, the amount of residential that's coming. We have over 1,000 units near your districts, Districts 1 and 4, of either townhomes or single-family homes. Many of them have, were approved years ago. And they're just facilitating, they're developing out their final phases, they're just starting. And with that, like Commissioner Oliver said, there's a requirement to extend Clark Road. That extension was approved in the foresight back in 2000. It just took that long for the development and that property to finally get to the point of developing. We've reviewed over a million square feet of light industrial flex office on our west side of town, along the 429, which is going to be our new front door for the city of Acoe. That light industrial flex office is going to be an employment driver. We are going to have an in-migration of people coming to Acoe to work in these buildings. It's over 1 million square feet. Those type of buildings, the light industrial, allows us to not be the, every, all the roads lead to Acoe, but it could be all industries lead to Acoe. We've had an expansion of the Cisco food service. We have space available that Kelly Foods uses. So, we're kind of getting that market on food service industry. We have a Sunbelt rental. If a company needs equipment in West Orange and central Florida, we have one of the best equipment places to rent and maintain your equipment. You have to come to Acoe, because all roads lead to Acoe. As I said, this light industrial and flex office, it sounds kind of, you know, industrial, but that flex office part, aspect, allows companies to locate their, move their corporation without building a nice ivory tower. They can move in this building, do a 10,000-square-foot office, an 80,000-square-foot of warehouse storage space. That's going to bring jobs and people that want to live near the 429, live in Acoe, and move into these nice new homes we have. We've approved a lot of commercial. If you see the, what's shown as the CRA, we are seeing finally an uptick along the, in our, within our community redevelopment area, you'll hear about later on, along Highway 50. In some areas, some corners, there are lease rates of $40 a square foot. Lease rates in other parts of the city may be $10 to $20 a square foot. That's why you're seeing the national companies, the Smoothie Kings, go into these places, the Starbucks, because of the demographics, the building type, and the lease rates are there. We're planning to move all of that up towards District 1 and District 4. We have these things we put in place called overlays to drive those good development, the proper development in a proper pattern that will get good lease rates and get those good tenants. We have the stock, we want those first-generation users, those mom-and-pops to take space, but we also want the Everywhere USA that people are looking for. And we've, as you can see there, we've approved a lot of nice-looking commercial buildings, and there's more to come. The tying that all back to the CIP, we utilize this to help us make a recommendation and tell this commission, this is the right type of development at the right time, because we can either handle it, or if we cannot handle it, they are willing to pay their fair share and go forward. What's coming up? Commissioner Oliver talked about the two hotels we have. We have a property on the north side of 50 that recently closed, and it's going to be a hotel, probably a comfort suite. And we have another development in District 1 that we approved and set aside a lot solely for another hotel, to be on that interchange of the 429 and West Road. We have a number of retail buildings, District 1's getting retail, District 4 in that Acoe Landings. We're talking to a user for one of those commercial pads near the Publix. We have a development at the intersection of Lakewood, just on the east side of the 429 and West Road. It's called Acoe Village. It has 320 apartments, 196 townhomes, and the ability for 150,000 square foot of commercial and that hotel pad. We, at one of those conferences, Assistant City Manager Shadrick told you about, we met with the retail company marketing that, and they are getting a lot of interest. And we will, they should be able to provide you guys an opportunity to have a nice place to fuel your car and not have to drive either to Silver Star or to Highway 50. It's not a home-run use, but it's something that is going to provide the residents of District 1 and District 4 that opportunity to be able to kind of stay home and get some of your errands done. Lastly, I'd like to say that input from the citizens in the planning department is vital. We want to know the pulse of what you guys are thinking, and by attending these meetings and asking good questions, we're happy to answer any question anytime. If you hear something on one of the websites, rants or raves, what's going on, please call our office. We will tell you exactly what we know. I've had a lot of phone calls about the old Winn-Dixie, they took the paper out of the windows. I don't know what's going on there. There's not a build-out of the old Winn-Dixie Center that we have seen. I've called the broker and hopefully to get some information, but we've talked to luckies and such to try to move in there. But, to date, nothing is going in that we know of. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Also, just want to, I know he put a lot of information out there, and just kind of want to put it more in my terms, the way I understand it, is we're looking at, we, one of the sore areas that we have in our city is our mall. And I see a lot of heads shaking when I say, when I mention it. You can run a whole campaign, just walk up to the door and knock on the door and say, "The mall." And they're like, "Yeah," you know. But, the reality of it is, is that when you listen to Mike talk about the different projects that we've got going on, and we're talking about shifting things a little bit. If we, the mall is privately owned, the city has no interest in the mall. We have no interest in the land or anything of that nature, the mall is all privately owned. So, we have very little say-so besides just collecting taxes with those guys. But, one thing that the leadership has come up with is, okay, if we can't control that, what can we control? We can control our CRA, we control how we shift things and focus. We can move the focus from the mall as you're coming down 50 and not thinking about the mall. You're thinking about getting to the Smoothie King or the Starbucks. So, guess what, the mall becomes irrelevant to you now. So, now you're trying to get to the Smoothie King, you're trying to get to the retail stores, you're trying to get to the restaurants that passes the mall. And we shift things from that area, from the mall at Clark Road, going up, heading west on 50, all the way down to the 429, and you shift the focus. So, therefore, if we can control the focus and shift the focus, then the mall becomes irrelevant. They can no longer hold us hostage as the beginning point of our city. And it used to be the center of our city years and years ago. The mall was, everybody came to the mall. It was the first thing you see coming from east to west in the city. So, now we're going to shift that, moving towards, going west, east to west, toward McGuire, our CRA area, and our 429 area, shifting that focus around. So, we definitely have control of that, and we can bring more retail that way. Next, we're going to hear from Mark. So, next, we're going to hear from Mark Johnson, he's the director of Parks and Rec. He'll talk about what we've got going on with Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mark Johnson, Parks and Recreation. I'm actually born and raised in Acoe, you know, 43 years I've lived here, except for I went to college, of course. Up on the hill, Acoe Hills Road, if you know where that is, Silver Star. I'm now a resident of District 2 over here off White Road. But, I'll go through a little things, a few things with the department. Parks and Rec, there's a variety of things we do. We maintain the parks, of course, mow, cut, edge, weed eat. The ball fields, we take a lot of pride in our ball fields. If you go up to our sports fields, football, baseball, soccer, you're not going to find many better fields to play on. We run different programs, summer camp for the kids, that's our big one. Before and after-school programs at a very good price for that, try to help out the citizens in the community. We run a youth basketball program ourselves, but we also partner with other youth organizations, like Pop Warner Football, West Orange Babe Ruth, and GGS Soccer. So, soccer, football, and baseball are run by separate, but we partner with them. We take care of all their fields and that kind of stuff. As far as events, we do do, we're very involved in our events in the city, Parks and Rec. I think a lot, everything we do, Parks and Rec's involved. Our biggest event is, of course, Donors Day, which is coming up, October 25th and 26th. It's a two-day festival, I'd say 15 to 20,000 people in and out total, it's a lot of people. So, we've got a lot of work for the next six, seven weeks to get ready for that. We do a haunted house on, off of Acoe, Apopka Road, out there where the West Orange Girls Club's complex is. We do it, we're doing it five nights this year. We do it, we're doing it five nights this year and we average about five thousand people through the house every year, which is a lot. It is, I think it's a natural haunted house to begin with, but we just, we add our, we add our own little flair. Our department loves it. I mean, we're up there till midnight those nights working, uh, taking care of the citizens and it's like, I think, five bucks to go through the house.
Isn't it ranked?
Yeah, I think we were ranked top ten in the state of Florida. I'm not, we ranked it, I'm not sure who ranked us, but there's a website, Florida haunted houses and we were up there. We're at a better price than, say, if you go to Universal, that kind of thing. Uh, we're bringing back our Christmas event this year. We didn't have it last year due to, to construction, of course, but this year we're planning to have it again. We'll be right here, um, in this area, Bill Breeze Park area, Lakefront Park. We have, have Santa Claus, Miss Claus, a hayride, that kind of stuff. It's coming back this year. I think it's the first Saturday in December. The four parks and facilities that are in your, in your district is Prairie Lake Park, Parkside Coventry, um, the Jim Beach Center, and there's a park in Forest Oaks. So those are the four parks that we take care of. Actually, Parkside Coventry, we'll be getting a new tennis court in the next two, three months, a whole new tennis court with new fencing, all that, everything. So, um, let's see, as far as capital items that we're currently in completing is the tennis court, of course, I just mentioned. Uh, we're putting about two hundred thousand dollars into refencing and redoing some ball fields at Big Natty Park, which is just to the west of District Four. And we've done about four new playgrounds in the last two years at a variety of parks. Uh, we have money in the budget again this year, so we'll be looking at which parks need new playgrounds and we'll kind of just go by that. Um, usually about seven to tier, seven to ten year lifespan on playgrounds. We also oversee the Lakeshore Center, which is, is renovated, um, is, it's complete. We're still working on everything around it, but it's a state-of-the-art facility. You're not going to find a better wedding facility in Orange County, especially in West Orange County. There's not, there's nothing comparable to that. Um, we're going to have a state-of-the-art wedding garden when, around the Maguire House. You see the fencing going up already around it. With landscaping, it's going to be incredible. That'll be with, in the next few months, that'll be completed. Uh, we also have a Park and Rec Board, so if you want to be part of the board, you can see Melanie with the City Clerk's Office. We always need, we currently have five members. We have five members currently and we're always looking, we have nine spots, so if you want to be involved, we meet every other, uh, mu, the third Monday every, every other month and we go over the stuff with the city and the Parks and Rec Department and make decisions on items. Uh, the last thing I have is also there's a survey coming out. We've been working with the Development Services Department and Ginger Corliss. Uh, we're going to have a survey on the parks within the city where we need your feedback. It's going to be available online. Um, there'll be a push, um, to a private press release coming out with Facebook in a couple of weeks, so get in there and fill it out. Let us know what you need or what you like, what you don't like, that kind of stuff and we can, uh, improve your parks whichever way we can on that.
Commissioner Oliver may give you all some homework too, but I'm giving you that as homework. Can you see that survey come online? I want you all to think about the parks in your, in your area and that's a really great tool. It's actually got several places in the survey. It's online. If anyone in the room right now has any difficulty getting online, taking it, you can come here, somebody can help you take it, um, online here. But it'll have, give you the opportunity to type in actual comments about things that you'd like to see at parks and it's a really good opportunity here. The, the survey was also, was put together by a combination of our Parks Department, our Planning Department and the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. So it's, it's a really great tool. Of course, we're going to ask the commission to promote it at upcoming commission meetings also. Because if we get enough responses from that, that can actually kind of goes back to what Commissioner Oliver was talking about strategic planning. That becomes kind of a basis, cornerstone for a goal. If we get enough responses saying, hey, we need a skateboard park at this location, well, guess what? We've just kind of formulated a goal based on a pretty big majority voice of the people. So please don't forget about the park survey.
Awesome. Thanks, Mark. Uh, thank you very much. But also want to, uh, piggyback on, um, the Lakeshore Center. Uh, one of the things that the commission is just, uh, we talked about it last meeting, one of the citizens came and started, did a price comparison of our Lakeshore Center for the citizens versus, uh, some of the other event halls around us in Winter Garden and some of the other areas, Winter Park. And, uh, we have, uh, tasked the, uh, Parks and Rec and the leadership to go back and look at the cost as it pertains to what we charge our citizens for that. So that, that cost may be going down as a result of that. And all that started because of one citizen came and talked about the pricing and we had the opportunity to, uh, to task the leadership to go ahead and look at comparative prices and try to get the price down almost by fifty percent just for citizens at the new Lakeshore Center. So that's, that's just government in action. And also, uh, finally, what, 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 uh, what Mark was saying about the different events, I want to encourage you guys, come to Founder's Day. Come out and see what Founder's Day is about, come and mingle with, with the people and, um, I know we've had different stigmatism about it, but you may be pleas, pleasingly and pleasantly surprised that, uh, um, it's a lot of fun. It is a lot of fun. I went the, for the first time last year, my wife and I, my family, we had, we had a great time. So I want to put a plug in for Founder's Day. Come out and, and test the waters and see what it's all about. Uh, next we have, um, Utilities Department. Just going to talk, or?
One question.
Is there a question? I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't see.
Um, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, that lake is so high now. It's, it's covered, it's, it's all the way up over the side wall and, I mean, is there a bridge that has to be cleared out or something for to take it down or?
There, there.
I'm going to step out of line. Steve Krug, your Public Works Director. The lake, the city has a lot of, has twelve basins that drain nowhere. We basically have, um, fourteen basins within the city. Twelve of them are like a big bathtub. Prairie Lake is one of them and we've experienced rains like we've never had before and that's why we're at those levels right now. There really isn't a place for it to go, um, other than evaporation and going down into the ground at this point. But we keep an eyeball on it. If we had a way to move it somewhere, we would. We talk with St. John's River Water Management District all the time, um, about what we can do and we, we monitor it. But yeah, we haven't seen that dock in a while.
I know. You can't see the dock. It has downs, you know, like turtles and stuff out.
See more wildlife.
A lot of things that are, that we can't handle.
There's, there's a lot of wildlife living in there.
And that may be something that we, we look at making some changes there, you know, to mitigate, you have the inability to move that stormwater. Did you want me to cover HR on this?
No, we're not going to cover those guys at all. Uh, so being like utilities would be, talking about utilities. And, um, yeah, I've, I've been over there. One of the things that, that I noticed the last time I rode through there, I, I usually ride the district once a month. I ride through as, as many streets as I can. I do the outskirts first, then I kind of get to the inner streets and the neighborhoods and I just ride through. And one of the things I did notice, uh, going through there last month was the sneakers on the, on the wire. There were sneakers on the, um, on the power lines. So I work with, uh, with, with Sherri Seaver. She's our executive assistant, uh, for the commissioners. We contact Duke Energy to have those removed, uh, but that was the biggest thing that I saw last month when I did, when I rode through was sneakers. Uh, so we're definitely, uh, trying to be vigilant as much as we can and, you know, code enforcement. So there's, there is a, a, a merit of people, uh, riding the neighborhoods every day, looking for different things that may, uh, need to be, uh, addressed, you know, throughout our, our city.
Good evening. My name is Charles Smith. I'm in charge of the Utilities Department. I'm a professional engineer. We reach out every day and touch all the citizens. We provide high-quality, clean water for you to drink that is very safe. Over the last ten years, we haven't had one violation with the water quality that we bring to you. The other side of the business is we also collect the wastewater. We've, uh, do it, the conventional with a sewer system and we're one of the only municipalities that I know of that has a septic tank pumping program for people that are on septic tanks that can pay a monthly nominal fee and will show up every three years to pump your septic tanks. So if you have septic tanks, it's, it's a very, it's, it's at about the same price as a regone, but we come and get you guys out of the domestic onsite residential pumping. Now, we are also, and we call ourselves the Forgotten Responders. We're there twenty-four hours a day. If you see, have a problem in your house or you see it outside, all you have to do is call the after-hours on-call service and we will send somebody out. So if your sink breaks and you can't turn off the water, feel free to call us. We will respond and turn off the water and when you get it fixed, we come back to turn the water back on. We are the un, the Forgotten Responders. Now, one other thing about the utility business, you're going to look at the only business that tries to make less money. And the way we've done that is we've extended recline into y'all, most of the neighborhoods very aggressively and that saves our customers' water. We have incentive programs and programs to reach out to the customer that if you want an irrigation audit or something like that, that can save you money and conserve water, we are there for you. One other thing that we add, and I'll keep mine short because I don't want to get long, is we have a customer portal where you guys can go into the city's site, log in, create an account, and if nothing else, set up your utility account like your cell phone that tells you when your usage is getting close to it. So you can set yourself up a monthly budget and of water usage. And what that allows you to do is if you go somewhere and you have a leak in the house and you start approaching that, it'll send you a message. You can call us up. You can be in Alaskan, call us up and say, will you guys go turn off my meter? I've got this thing and I don't know what's going on. And we will respond and cut it off for you. But you got to go in and set it up because we don't know how to, to contact your people. But we are a business and we work very hard to have less revenue by saving you all money.
Thanks, Charles. And, and, and the reason I had them come out last, the last, uh, uh, town hall meeting, I didn't have utilities on there, but I put them on this, this year for a reason because I had to use them twice. And I had a leak develop in my home and, and it, and the water started going through the wall. And, uh, I called a plumber to come out and he told me it'd be anywhere between an hour to hour and a half to get there. And I said, do you understand there's water? I mean, just gushing out of the wall in my house. My, my living room is about to be a swimming pool. And I just happened to find one of your, two of your guys, you know, riding down the street. I stopped them, they turned my water off. And when they got it fixed, they came back and turned it on. And that was just one incident and then there was another incident where I had to use them, uh, but they were right there. So, uh, they have a, a, a very important role that they play when it comes to water. And I was always told, you never know what you need until you need it. And they're, they are there, uh, for that purpose. Ginger?
I'm Ginger Corliss and I am the CRA Administrator. You've been hearing that word CRA a lot tonight, right? CRA actually stands for the Community Redevelopment Agency and that agency is the commission plus two that oversees activities within a special district known as Fifty West. And Fifty West is a pretty cool name. One of the things that we're trying to brand, basically this a thousand seventy acre special district that is kind of centered on State Road fifty from the four twenty-nine over to Clark Road, north to basically storage Geneva and down to the Turnpike. The special district was actually created in two thousand and six and is funded through something called basically increment financing or increment revenues. And that's pretty nifty because it provides the city a revenue base to do redevelopment activities within the special district of Fifty West. And how that comes to be is that in two thousand and six, when we created the agency, we had a set line for property values. As we've made improvements within this district, the property values have actually increased and since two thousand and six, it's increased eighty-seven percent as relates to property values within this district. Now those, that basically the taxes that are paid in above that base level stay within the district, both city and county, a portion, there's a percentage, to make improvements within the redevelopment area or district for Fifty West that's overseen by the CRA. It is my job to make sure that I'm implementing the vision for Fifty West. And I have a very special connection to it because I actually drafted the plan back in two thousand and six as a, as a, a private entity. Now I'm a city employee, but I'm also a twenty-year resident of the city component. I can talk a lot all day long about the redevelopment district and how it's comprised, but I actually want to make sure you take one of these with you. It is our annual report. And I can add a little bit to this, is that you've heard a lot about the commercial and the retail and the improvements we've been doing to basically the Health Central Campus and seeing the diversity relates to the quality of businesses come along line, the quality of opportunities. But what one of our main focuses as the CRA and the city is to make some public infrastructure improvements within the district, helping to beautify so when people come to look at this area, they want to be able to relocate, to build their businesses here, to have those businesses. Some of the things we've accomplished is actually the re-landscaping of Old Winter Garden Road between Maguire Road to just west of Henthall. Has anybody seen that? It's starting to really kind of give that vision for what we're trying to do from a landscaping and community-wise. We've redone South Blackwood and been able to improve that. In October, we'll actually be redeveloping the medians, re-landscaping those medians between, that are north of fifty to Beth, Matthew Paris. And those, the landscape that was in there is over thirty years old. So you're maybe, you'll see some whole new fresh plants and some things going on there. Again, trying to become a, a really dynamic community, that urban vision for the city of Akoi of Fifty West. Some other things coming online, which also this document speaks to them, we're very proud, we're finishing the plans for the Fifty West Wellness Park. This park actually is going to be centered as a half-mile walking loop around a retention pond that is on South Blueford that's just adjacent to the police department. We'll also have exercise stations that are outside that will actually be under canopies and cool and making sure that there's an opportunity for people to get out in public recreation and walk and have fitness components to there. We're also working on, uh, safer routes to school and making sure we're improving South Blueford, continuing that what we have downtown, moving it south all the way to Old Winter Garden Road and making improvements so people can walk in an urban environment and improve. And I can talk about these improvements all day long. So one of the things I'm going to really encourage you to do for me, my card is also back there. Call me, come talk to me about what's going on there or if you have any questions, I'd be glad to assist you with that.
Thank you, Ginger. There's a lot of great things going on our CRA. Uh, as you can see, um, they're putting together some dynamic plans to continue to move our city forward. And, uh, we have a lot of confidence in Ginger and her team and what they're doing, uh, for our CRA. Let's talk trash.
You bet. I'm Steve Krug. Like I said before, I have the pleasure of leading our public works team. And like Commissioner says, one of the main things we handle is your garbage. We're also in charge of all your streets, your traffic signals, storm drainage, retention ponds. We also take care of all the city vehicles and the city buildings. Um, you've heard about a lot of the projects going on. Two projects that are, um, close in, to home for District Four on the resurfacing program for next year is the Coventry subdivision and the Orchard Park subdivision. We also have planned out of the next, um, five years, we're looking at additional subdivisions within the district that haven't been resurfacing in a while. We completed, um, the Sawmill subdivision in the past five years. We've been working on that, knocked it out and we're moving on into the other areas so that we can cover the, the commission's been very generous with their resurfacing program, making sure we keep the roads in good shape. Um, and one of the things I wanted to hit on, like everyone talks about, I'd say, they save the best for last and I guess they do because they have public down here. We want to hear from you. When we're doing our job right, you don't know we're there. There aren't enough of us to see everything out there, so if you see something wrong, we want to hear from you. Um, that's one of the best things. We've got contact with, on email, um, our website, phone numbers. We do utilize the police department's, um, Facebook as our source for putting out information. So if there's anything you need, feel free to call us. That's why we're here.
Awesome. Thanks.
I just wanted to say one little thing about our team that's here tonight, um, and I meant to do that earlier, but we have probably the best management team I've worked with and that I've worked as a consultant and other local governments. But each one of our managers and development directors has been really accomplished in their field. Steve ran an engineering program in much, much larger local government and several have tried to lure him away. Ginger owned her own planning firm, um, and where you don't see something like that. Charles Smith was, the city of Tampa tried to hire him, our utilities director. Mark Johnson, master's degree, um, homegrown Akoi resident, um, you know, I'm going to touch everybody. Trump Chief Brown came in, came in from the, as a regular officer, worked his way all the way up to chief, went to the Came in as a regular officer, worked his way all the way up to chief, went to the FBI academy. Deputy chief, came from the Broward Sheriff's Department, which is the largest law enforcement agency in the state of Florida. Miami-Dade, my bad. That's my first mistake I've made today. It might be the whole week. Don't count what all our lives says. But Mike Rumer, he has worked himself from the ground up, has a master's degree, and he really has come into his own. But we really are trying very hard to maintain the best, well-educated, versed workforce we can. And the number-one course in our, we managed to hire away one of City of Orlando's park chiefs. I didn't mean to leave you out there. I'm sure I flushed somebody out unintentionally, but. We've got a pretty good team. We could take our team and go somewhere much bigger. We rely on the commission. Like Commissioner Oliver's pushing a lot of big topics right now. They set the policies that we follow and try to implement. And that's very important for you to understand. We wanna have that dialogue for you, and then you always have a voice sitting up on the dais at the commission meetings. And they, you know, we've got a great commission right now. We've actually doubled property values in the last five years. We've got much bigger things ahead, and change is coming, and it's good. We're constantly in our own lives. You see changes occurring over time. And a local government's a very living entity like that. But we have a great team here. We want to hear from you. We're not just saying that because we're trying to impress the commissioners in the room. We sincerely mean that, and thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't say that earlier.
Not a problem. I understand. And, you know, again.
I knew I forgot somebody. We got the best city clerk around.
Oh, yeah.
Very well-educated. She is always correcting me on things. She actually started as, in her teams, I think, here. And, you know, there's some value to that also, because, you know, it takes a special person to be able to work themselves up through the ranks and the type of drive and desire to succeed. If that happens, that's a big value. I place as much value on people that have been here and worked themselves up from an entry-level person as I do somebody walking in, you know, with two master's degrees. And probably our most educated director is not here tonight.
And, you know, it says all that, but there's really two people that keeps them all going, and that's Sharon Jakita. They keep them all going. There's two people that actually keep them all moving and keep everything, keep all the glue together here in the city. Without further ado, I want to hear from you as citizens. I want to, I want to hear your questions. I want to hear your comments, your concerns. Anything that you feel that's relevant, or not irrelevant, that we need to know in the city. I need to know what my marching orders are. I don't just wake up one day and say, "Well, I think the citizens want this. I think they need this." I have to get out, and I have to talk to people. I have to touch people. I have to have conversations at Publix. I have to have conversations at Walmart. I have to have conversations everywhere I go about what the things that you, the things that you wanna see in the city and the things that I should be doing to properly represent you. So without further ado, if you have any questions, this is the time to voice those concerns or comments. Yes, sir?
Clark Road, you mentioned, we have a lot of new subdivisions coming up on Clark, Clark, Clark Road.
Yes, sir.
Clark Road's right by the police station here. Comes from a two-lane to a one-lane after eighty minutes. Are you planning to extend Clark Road on Clark Road?
That's a great question, and the answer to that question is yes. And Mike can give you a little more technical answer about it, but yes, there is plans in place to extend Clark Road from two lanes to four lanes at eighty minutes, heading north towards Popco Vine. Yes.
Towards Clark Road.
I'm sorry, towards Clark Road. I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, the good, the good part of that stretch of road is the Prairie Lake subdivision was responsible for giving the land for Clark Road and constructing Clark Road. You're gonna see some of the final build-out of that Prairie Lake development, which extends from eighty minutes up to Hackney Prairie. They, again, they built Clark Road, and they gave us the land for the widening. So we have all the land in place to widen all the way up to Clarkona Kauai Road. Now we need a design, an engineered plan, and the funds to widen it. And that's going to be a goal that's gonna be in the capital improvement plan, and we're gonna have to work to try to find a way to pay to either do it incrementally or do it all at once. I can tell you, really looking presently with the requirement of Arden Park to dedicate the land and build the west two lanes and continue the Clark Road north, that's gonna have four lanes at Clarkona Kauai. So now we have to have the receiving lanes on the south side of Clarkona Kauai. We don't have a development that's required to construct it, so we're gonna have to try to figure out a way to get it done while they're under construction. And the little portion of Clark, south of Clarkona, should be four lanes. I'm trying to get it down to Orchard Park. But that's gonna allow that, that's gonna allow us to have dual left lanes on Clarkona Kauai, heading west, south to Clark, so you'll have two lanes. You can shorten that green signal for that left turn, which means you can lengthen the green signal going north and south on Clark, which is one way, a little Band-Aid that's gonna help some of those traffic issues. There is a plan. The good part is, in road widening or road construction, the biggest cost is acquiring the land. We have the land. If you look at Clark Road on that west side, that's actually the curb of the median. And we have all the land on the other side. We just have to get the funds to construct it. Good question.
Good question. Also, in addition to that, if you look at Clark Road and Hackney Prairie, if you notice, there is a little, the road kinda goes out a little bit beyond the curb. There's also a plan to add a left turn signal there, or a left turn lane there that will allow traffic to continue to go through, as opposed to stopping traffic heading south. It will continue to go through while others make left turns on the Hackney Prairie. So there is plans to do that as well. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I spoke to you in front of Publix the other day, and I said, "We're gonna be coming," but somehow I thought it was six-thirty, and we got here like, so I was putting your cards. Someone had said that you had mentioned, I guess that Clark Road is also gonna be down further?
Yes.
Also, I see out here is Jenny.
That's exactly what it is. That's the Clark Road extension. It's actually a part of the master plan to relieve traffic on Clark Road and Clarkona Kauai to extend it from, I guess I'm doing okay, huh? Extend it from Clarkona Kauai all up to McCormick Road. That was actually, that plan was set up by Arden Park, I think it was Phase Five and Six.
At, yes.
Agreed to, to extend it all the way through. So the plans to do it has already been done. I think it's already been engineered. It's already as well.
The original builders out, Lenar is building, and they've decided, the market's so good, they wanna build all the final phases. By the original agreement in two thousand, the last phase they were required to extend the road, we have just reviewed the final set of plans. They're gonna go ahead and make that extension before they actually start putting homes in Phase Five. That extension's gonna be a nice way to relieve some of that traffic, so yes. If you go up to McCormick Road now, you'll see a portion of Clark's built, and it just dead ends. We only had it as of two thousand and nine, going up to the north end of Clark Road, then it stopped. We had a subdivision come in called McCormick Reserve. And we went to our CIP and our comp plan and said, "Guess what? We have a road here. You've gotta build it," and they built it. So if you go from McCormick, you'll drive right to a dead end, and that's at the Arden Park property line. So we have that segment done already.
So it's in the works. Great question.
Because we've been here since two thousand, and we live in Prairie Lake Village, which we've been in a lot. And we've noticed a lot of traffic on Clark Road lately, you know, it's almost like driving on an ice car.
Absolutely.
Trying to get out of our subdivision. And we did also see that there was, you know, like, some dirt roads, people that put here and there, calling around. And then the way it comes around from Clark Road, Clark Road, on the Clark.
On the Clark.
All those lines that come around, and then it says, "Close road," or something like that.
It's like, you know, if, we'll tell a developer, "You gotta put sidewalks in," and they'll say, "Well, there's no sidewalks leading to it," and the answer is, "Well, you gotta start somewhere." So that's what we do. We get what we can take. We take what we can get.
Absolutely. There's another question?
Now, what do you have, trying to give a large Clark Road, so to McCormick? So there's a subdivision right here that gets in the manner. So that's not really traffic. So what happens to the subdivision? Can they put like speed bumps? Because you know what's gonna happen is, the traffic coming from our road, they're not gonna go to McCormick anymore, because too much traffic right here, so they have to turn. So they can put a subdivision, which is a lot of residents, you know, they put speed bumps, they'll slow them down, because you know they're gonna go like forty, fifty miles an hour.
They're gonna cut through to get. Yes. Steve gets the pleasure of facilitating our speed hump program, but there is a process for that. There's a little study they do in that. It's not envisioned, we're not envisioning bad drivers there now, but we expect it. When that happens, you can, your HOA can contact Public Works or your district commissioner and say, "Hey, we've got a little cut-through problem. We need to look at some speed bumps."
Absolutely. And then when it goes through a community like that, it's easier to get raised bumps or speed bumps in a community as opposed to a, like a strip of road, like Hackney Prairie. So if you ever walked on Hackney Prairie and watched how fast people drive down Hackney Prairie, and I've asked several times to, "Can we put some raised roads, some raised, raised speed bumps there to slow them down?" But with that type of road, it is really hard to do. So the only thing that you can do is probably create roundabouts, which would make it look kinda weird there, but you could also beautify it as well. But that's one of the things I've spoken to the city manager about, several cases, about Hackney Prairie, Johia Shores, and a couple of other roads that people just fly right through. But going through residential areas is much easier to do, as opposed to roads like that, through roads like that. But definitely, if that happens, give me a call. My car's back there. I'll be more than happy to try to get the funding for it and try to get it moving exponentially. Nothing moves really fast here at City Hall, but we're gonna try to change that. We're gonna try to move things. I was always told, "You can always do what you wanna do." That's just my, that's my philosophy. I know we have protocols and procedures on how we do things, but to be perfectly honest with you, I'm a believer in, we can do exactly what we wanna do when it comes time to do those kinda things. So let me know if that happens, and we can start working on getting that done. Yes, ma'am?
I'm also a resident of Prairie Lake. And well, first, as far as Hackney Prairie is concerned, it is really concerning when you think that there's an elementary school and a park, and so you have the speed you do there. But one of the things that really concerns me is the traffic jam. People that, I know they're getting off of work and they're getting home. One of the most frustrating things is when they block, or it's just back-to-back cars all the way up Clark. And we can't even get out of our, you know, turn onto Clark. I've stood and waited as long as ten minutes, just to make that turn onto Clark. And people, they don't hear that, they're walking the street. So I would like to know, what are we doing about that? I mean, maybe if there was more police presence or something, they shouldn't do that.
Steve's gonna cover that. And again, I have, myself, has been subject to that, coming out of Prairie Lake subdivision, trying to make the left turn on Clark Road, because traffic's backed up and you can't get a gap there. So one of the things I will say to you is, one of the things that I voted against, there is a subdivision due to be built on the other side of Clark Road, which is a town hall. And I voted against that because it, I was told it was already approved years and years ago. And I understand those things, and they were, they wasn't tasked to widen the road because they were grandfathered in, they were approved for so long. But my whole point was the fact that, that's fine, but it's still gonna add more traffic to our roads now. You might have approved it ten years ago, but right now, in two thousand and nineteen, the reality is, there's more cars. And if we need to circle back or figure out some way to say, "Hey, look, we gotta figure something out about widening this road or adding more left turns on the road to relieve the traffic," then I'm all for that. So I'm not really sure of all the legalese and what's involved in making it happen, but I do know that that is a problem. And again, I think that every problem has at least ten solutions. We just gotta figure out which one is gonna work for us.
While we're working on those solutions, one of the Public Works and Development Services worked together this past year. We had, Mike's team had some funding for traffic studies. We were able to hire a consultant to do a traffic study of all the existing signals on Clark Road, and 'cause of all the additional traffic. And they have put together a traffic study, re-timing everything. We were gonna have that implemented right before the storm. It should be implemented in the next two weeks. So with the idea of making sure traffic's flowing better at all the traffic signals. It's not gonna help as much with the volume, but to get people to not be stacked up as much, whatever we can do to make things flow better.
We have that police presence, but some of it is just.
Yeah, that's all, I can't help with that, but we are trying to make it easier for them to get through there.
Yes, ma'am?
If you mentioned that it's easier in a community to get the speed bumps, I'm gonna have to differ. I've been in Prairie Lake now for fifteen years. We have been trying to get speed bumps on Majestic Hill. Because people use that as a comfort. We were told we needed to get sixty-five percent of the people on that street to sign off, that they wanted. We did a canvassing. We got all the names and everything, and had that done. Then we were told that we had to have a portion of the money to do it. Well, we said, "Okay, we'll have, just give you an example, five thousand dollars." "Okay, well, we're gonna do our half." And we still don't have speed bumps. I would say to the police chief, "If you call," and especially early in the morning, people are trying to run, and nowadays, the traffic is bad. They are flying through there, like, there's no stop sign there. But if you call, normally you'll get a police officer that comes up. You can't sit there all day long to make them do right. So while he's sitting there, they observe the stop sign. But the minute he leaves, it's like somebody calls him and says, "You're gone." And then they speed through. And a couple of times, you know, I've seen people walk in, a dog, saying, "You know, he's a dog." And even though he's on a leash, and you see the kids, they get excited. I'm so afraid that at some point, somebody's child or dog or something is going to happen there. And we've been saying, we wanted the speed bumps. We gasped, we had the money. Nothing has ever happened.
Okay. Well, you know what? Well, I'm glad to let me know that this now, because right now, we're just about to approve our final budgeting and our budgeting workshops. This is something I can go back to the city manager and say, "Hey, look, this is what's happened with this neighborhood. This is where they are. We need money to get raised speed bumps." There's different types of bumps. I've actually did some research. There's actually, you got the little plastic ones you can put out with the stakes in them. You could actually go in and raise the pavement. There's so many things you can do. And it's not, well, I'm not gonna say it's not really cost-efficient, but the materials are probably gonna cost something, but I believe that I can help facilitate this, move this forward, working with assistant city manager, working with the city manager. And let's see about if we can find some funds to make this happen. Again, the reason I say that, it's easy to get it through city streets, because it was based on a conversation that I had with the city manager about speed bumps. And that was about Hackney Prairie and Johia Shores. And the information that I received back was that it would be easier for me to put them in a residential area than those roads, what people use as drag strips. So my next call tomorrow morning is gonna be to Rob and Craig, and we're gonna sit down, and I'm gonna meet with them and see, what can we do to make this happen? And before we do our final approval on our budget. So I will do that. You have my card. And I wanna probably get your information before you leave, so I can follow up with you and let you know what the conversation was and what the plan, the plan is moving forward.
I wanted, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I have made a suggestion as far as Hackney Prairie, where the people are just blocking that both way out. You know, I've seen in some areas where they have a sign that says, "Do not block intersection."
Right.
Right.
You know, just, or they will flash a light with a sign, do not block intersection.
Yeah, I'll get with the Public Works director. And my card is on the table back there. Please let us know of all these issues. That, we look at all the traffic, it's the three Es, a traffic engineer, enforce and educate all of our citizens. We know they're educated, they know they shouldn't be blocking that. Enforcement is the last thing we like to do. We hope that everybody will follow the rules. The greatest thing about all these great plans and making great travel roads is it becomes a problem for us because of the speeding and then the people trying to cut through neighborhoods. And we've noticed a big, because the backup at Clerkona and Clark, everyone rushes from Silver Star and flows out everywhere to try to beat everyone else to get to Clerkona. And I don't know if they're going up to Arden Park or even all the, even on Sawmill, but they go down eighty MEMs, they go down Johiah Shores. The speeding on all those roads has really picked up. And it really is our biggest problem, which I'm glad in the city of Akoi that traffic is our biggest issue. But we, if you call us, we'll get out there. We can't stay forever, like they were saying, but we can do our best to educate. And that, you know, you hate to see people in their own neighborhood speeding. It seems crazy to me. So, but my card is there, email us. I'll make sure there is directed enforcement in the areas that we talk about, and you will have an officer there. Those, I was talking earlier about Fred Pole. We, all the officers are GPS monitored. We're not monitoring them, but they, we can tell where they've been, how long they've been there. And so they do go to the places that we direct them to. And we can tell how long they've been there and what enforcement actions they've taken, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Steve. Any more questions? Right here, I said a young lady back there behind you, then I'll come back to you, ma'am. Yes?
I'm not sure this is to District Four or not, but along on the topic of traffic, I'd like to say that on West Road and Akoi Crown Point Parkway and Akoi, just on West Road mainly and Akoi Crown Point Parkway, I've been noticing that there have been many car accidents, traffic related instances on those two areas. And I feel like a lot of people aren't being really irritated and annoyed about how when it's happening, they have to get redirected just to go to the store, to the pharmacy at the corner. When this happens. And I just want to know if there could be some sort of, some sort of traffic control or something to prevent this from happening. Because just, I think it's just last week, there was an accident at the corner of Akoi Crown Point Parkway, just outside of Dunkin Donuts, where a former primary school student was injured or passed the wind. So I'd like to see there any sort of control to, you know, prevent this from happening. Because I know that people are trying to pick up their students from the elementary school and the high school. They're rushing to the front face place, and students got their cars, and they like show up all the time and stuff and not pay attention. But I just want to know if there is some sort of way that we can prevent this from happening. Because this has happened quite a while, but it's been until Akoi. And I just want to not end up being one of those people that gets into a crash or my mother gets into one of those crashes because I defer some resources and pay attention.
Absolutely. So you travel that road quite a bit?
To get to school.
To get to school?
Right there. And it's just a straight over.
And you're going to the high school, Akoi High School? Right. You also sit on one of our advisory boards, right? You sit on one of our advisory boards as well? She sits on the youth council. This is one of our Akoi Youth Council members that actually talked about getting involved. And these are some of the things that you as an advisory board member have input to be able to make changes, to be able to implement policies that will allow us to alleviate issues that will cause fatalities in certain intersections. For one thing, I will tell you this, that that's District One, Commissioner Brinson's sitting back in the back there, that we've had some, lots of conversations about that intersection, as well as if you go, start heading north toward Apopka, it starts back there, as the traffic starts to come into Akoi. People flying down that road and the roads are narrow, there's no lights there. But there's a lot of conversation going on about that particular intersection and the safety, the safety measures that we're taking in that intersection, as well as some toward Apopka and Apopka, it was Apopka Akoi Road and McCormick, no light there, slowing some of that traffic down. And I can assure you that that's something that Commissioner Brinson is, he's taken on to try to get some of that traffic alleviated or at least some safety measures in place to help until we can start widening the road, adding more lights, and maybe even add a little more police presence as well.
I'll start off. You mentioned Dunkin Donuts, so the chief jumped up. We've got some, we've got some short-range... We've got some short-range plans, medium, midterm, and long-range plans. On the short term, we're gonna improve the intersection, intersection of Fuller's Cross Road and Akoi Apopka. There's gonna be left-turn lanes on all four approaches. That's gonna get the cars off the side, so you can continue going straight. So the driver will not be aggravated going through the Fuller's Cross Road intersection. Mind you, Akoi Apopka Road and West Road are county-owned and maintained roads. We have Crown Point Parkway. We're working with the school board. The school board's going to, I'll let you announce that, but do a nice project. We're gonna be extending Crown Point Cross, Parkway. That'll take some of the trips off of Akoi Apopka. The people that live off East Crown will no longer have to come this way to take, they'll be able to get to the school off Fuller's Cross and East Crown Point Road. That's gonna alleviate some of the traffic. And in the long range, we are looking at Lakewood Avenue, which runs Blueford straight up all the way up to Clerkona Akoi Road, just to the east side of the four twenty-nine. That is a future arterial collector road that we want to make look like a nice boulevard and have people start using Lakewood Avenue, which will reduce the amount of trips off Akoi Apopka Road. So in the short term, we're gonna improve the intersection at Fuller's Cross Road and Akoi Apopka. Midterm, extend Crown Point Parkway, get some of those trips off of Akoi Apopka Road. And in the long term, look at Lakewood, have that be a north-south arterial collector road, a heavily traveled road that people will use in lieu of Akoi Apopka. Because we're finding that the four twenty-nine, if there's an accident in the Akoi stretch, they're getting off and taking Akoi Apopka Road.
If I could just add one quick thing to that, I gave you one piece of homework, a park survey, and I'm gonna give you another piece. What Mike just mentioned about Lakewood Avenue is becoming a main north-south arterial and Akoi Apopka Road, those are both projects that would be perfect for this one cent sales tax money. If it passes. And so I'm putting a plug in right now, I'm asking you, when they start advertising community meetings that the county is holding, talk about the one cent sales tax. Akoi Apopka Road, for example, it affects the city of Apopka, the city of Akoi, and it becomes Maguire Road that goes all the way down through Windermere, that corridor. That is a multi-jurisdictional, regional project. And if they widened it and took the appropriate measures, it's a county road, like Mike said, it's not a city road. That is perfect for that type of program. And that's on the list, and we'll all be working more on it as we approach the election or the vote for that one cent sales tax. But there's two projects right there that he just mentioned that would make a dramatic improvement on circulation in the north area of our city. It would be perfectly funded with something like that. So please become active and reach out to your county commissioner, work through your district commissioners to adequately represent you with their meetings with the county mayor and the county commission on that. Because that's how we get those on the list.
Awesome. We have time for one more question, ma'am? I'm sorry, sir.
Mine is gonna be long-winded though, so go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
One thing that we were both talking about, so go ahead, ask us. So, on, as I said, we live, we live in Huron Valley, and we are at the end of, we're just beyond the ends of Grand Paul, that's where we are. And we have enough trouble getting out of our driveway, because it says on all the stop signs, three-way stop. But everyone just barges right through there and doesn't pay any attention to us trying to come out of the driveway, backing out of the driveway, because they think we're the fourth-way stop. You know, so that happens a lot. I don't know what to do with that. We've already got three, three-way stop signs. But the other thing is, when you come down Majestic Elm, all the time, especially on weekends, there are cars parked on both sides of the street, all the way down the street. And there's one particular car that parks like in a angle, and it's right after you come in, so that you could barely get by at all. And you can't even see what's coming, because it's a kind of pickup truck. And I don't, you know, I don't know. I know when I volunteered at Station Twenty-Five before this new chief got here, according to me, Chief Pete was here then. And I know code enforcement told me that parking on the street is not a good deal. It's a function of the police department.
So again, that is, that's a great concern. I used to live on New Victor, and we had issues like that. Very similar issues on New Victor Road from Clark Road to Johiah. And New Victor was like a, people would go through and people would park on the roads and make problems. I made a couple of phone calls to police department, and we actually was able to get some police presence. Again, they can't stay there all day, but if they hand out enough tickets, then people start to take notice. And it starts alleviating the problem a little bit. It's not going to, it's not gonna totally alleviate the problem. But it will have residents that park on the roads to take notice and say, well, do I want a ticket? Or just park in my driveway? Particularly with the stop signs, you got the three-way stop sign right there, I know what you're talking about. We have them blowing through New Victor all the time. Again, with the police presence that we had come out. And there is a way that you could actually call and get put on a list, I believe, I can't remember the name of it. But they would actually increase patrols there. And you can do it for like three weeks, you can do it for like a month, you can do it for like six months. But they came out, I called a couple of times, and they were able to get the police department out and alleviate a lot of the speeders. And they stopped the people that were blowing through the stop signs and parking on the streets.
And there's two quick things. Some of the officials had talked about, they don't have, it's county jurisdiction. It is our enforcement jurisdiction, so West Road and Crown Point and Akoi Apopka right there. Even though we don't maintain it as a city, it is law enforcement jurisdiction of the city of Akoi. Just for clarification on that. But parking, we have to look at the, every situation. You can park in the road, but we have to make sure the width of the road, if it is, it depends on, I don't know what the distance are, I think it was one side over seventeen feet, this is an engineering thing, two sides over twenty-one feet. And if it is less than that, we can look at it, make sure we have proper signage, and we will enforce that. But again, please email me or talk to my deputy chief and make sure we know where that is, so we can deal with it directly. We have to look at the roadway and make sure it's illegal to park on it. You're allowed to park on the roadway in the city of Akoi, unless it's signed or unless there's other circumstances, curves, intersections, and things like that.
Curves.
Okay.
It's curved.
It should just begin to...
I got you.
...begin the section.
We can look at that and make sure.
To park it on both sides.
And again, you're allowed to do that unless it's not marked.
I agree that, but it's equally fine.
Right. Okay. We can look at it.
All right. Get my card, give me a call. And I do a lot of follow-up. I call them all the time, I do a lot of follow-ups. So, yes, sir. Time for one last question. Yes, sir?
Pardon me, first of all, go ahead, sir.
No, that's all right.
First of all, I'd like to commend the border department, the police department, and the trash, the trash guy. And I apologize every holiday except for two, you say, no trash. All right, so that's, that's to be noted. We've been here over twenty-five years. Back then, that area where border side of that, when Shapiro used to live over there, right? And that area used to be like the golden era, you know, and we got the mall and stuff like that. But twenty-five years later, I'm sitting here, I'm not complaining, I'm just making another point. The CRA is saying, well, from Park Road to the four twenty-nine we're doing this, what happens to the people that live in the east of Park Road? You know, and things, we're to the point that we're gonna sell to move somewhere else where we can get better things. I mean, the mall has definitely been, been a problem. What can we do so that we can get pressure on the mall? Because that, right now, they're renting for call centers. We got the DMV has moved there, right? So I don't see, I don't see any solution here coming up that can help us, right? So if you could press, oh, the newsletter, I just saw the gentleman there at the town hall meeting, that's great for the people that follow the internet stuff and that. But back in the day, when you get the newsletter with Mayor Van Groot sending out those old stories about the butterflies and stuff, for the people like us that do not follow emails and emails and that, what can we do? So I would have known to be here since this day.
Okay, I'm gonna answer your first question first, let you know that there's several things that are underway. And I'm gonna speak to the West Oaks Mall for a moment. And you can look online, if you do that kinda thing, and you can see a lot of information to back this up. Retail is changing. It's changing on a national level, it's changing on a local level. And even though Florida enjoys a little bit different type of marketplace, because tourism is such a big industry here, it is changing here too. And malls are dying. That doesn't necessarily have to be a bad thing here, but we have a mall, and malls are dying everywhere. It is a good thing what they have done with the mall as opposed to what it could be had they not sought to put some employment. The Bed Bath & Beyond call center is a high-dollar call center. The task collector's office, the average wage in there, and speaking of average wages and economic development, we typically try to hit a target average wage when a company is coming in of fifty thousand dollars. It's kind of the benchmark that you wanna be at, so people can still have some disposable income. And so the task collector brought a huge amount of jobs that hit that target. Now Conduent, which is the company that does the toll processing, they're not hitting that with a lot of theirs, but they do have, they have probably ten, ten or so jobs that are executive level. But that is a good thing right now while things are changing. What I think will eventually happen over time, and the owner of the West Oaks Mall is a very savvy individual. And he's very successful, and he's not out to lose any money. So he's protecting himself well at getting those employers in there. However, we are constantly meeting with them, we meet with the owner of the mall several times a year. His company is a very big real estate management company called Moonbeam. They're based out of both New York and Las Vegas. They own a couple hundred shopping centers. They just got, won the bid to, for one of the major boating areas near Staten Island, New York. And they're a big player. And we have actually, several years ago, put together a plan similar to what you see at Winter Park Village, where the old Winter Park Mall converted into something really cool and new. They have that. They actually kinda came up with their own version of that. They're not gonna do that until the market dictates it. In the meantime, though, on a positive note, we've been meeting with Orange County, negotiating a joint planning agreement and several other things, including our reclaim water agreements. And one of the things that we've been working on relates to the CRA. And we have actually pitched to Orange County to include the mall property in the CRA, which that gets you into more marketing opportunities. That puts you into a bracket where we can actually use the dollars that are collected in the CRA to help make improvements and beautify the area, because that's a common complaint that I get. And we relay those complaints directly to the private property owner, Moonbeam Capital. But we are hoping that they... Capital, um, but we are hoping that they will eventually acquiesce and then allow us to include the mall in the CRA. Um, what that also, i- it really does a lot of big things for, um, the area, and we're only collecting, you know, the way a CRA or a community redevelopment, redevelopment area works, as Ginger was stating earlier, it's a tax increment financing district, so what that means is the taxes that are collected in that area have to be spent in the area. So the CRA gets the portion of taxes that normally go to the county and the taxes that go to the city, and they have to be spent in that area. So that's really a good thing. Um, there may be an opportunity in the future for you, um, to, to participate and maybe send a letter in saying, please, please approve this, or flood your district commissioner with, um, letters saying, or emails saying, hey, uh, I want you to try to really put some heat on the county about this, because this will ultimately be a county decision. They look at it typically as purely a financial exercise, and, and that's, that's typically what you would expect, um, because they look at their tax revenues and a CRA means I'm gonna lose a chunk of revenue that I didn't have, but they're getting so little on the mall now that it may be, makes sense for them to do that. So we're, we're all kinda keeping our fingers crossed for that to happen, and then it would become Part Fifty West if it did. Um, and what was the second thing that you asked about?
Oh, the newsletter.
Oh, the newsletter, you know, that's a policy decu, uh, decision that the commission is, is working towards making is to how they're going to promote and, and, and disseminate information to everyone, so stay tuned for coming.
We just had that conversation last night in the budget meeting, that's one of the things I talked about, I've mentioned it earlier, we talked about, um, uh, creating informational flyers and social media, those kind of things, and we, and I've been, I've been kinda going through this for the past six months, uh, again, about getting a budget to be able to get information out to citizens. Everyone doesn't use social media, everyone doesn't use the technology, some people actually get an old fa, old-fashioned flyer in the mail telling you what's going on. So again, uh, that's one of the fights that I have, uh, taken upon myself, uh, that I believe I do have support now, uh, that I didn't have six months ago, but I do have the support to get a budget together to start sending out quarterly, uh, flyers or send out information within your, um, your, your water bill, start doing that again, but at least be able to get that information out to you. Now, as far as the mall is concerned, I feel exactly the same way you feel. Uh, I'll, I can get on my soapbox about the mall, I, I mean, I, I mean, I get to the point where I wanna just to get the picks for, 'cause I wanna get the torches, and I wanna go and, uh, I wanna picket it. I wanna stand there with signs and say, you guys need to do something, you're holding us hostage, you're holding our city hostage, the gateway to our city hostage, because you have dilapidated areas and it looks disenfranchised.
Everything.
It looks disenfranchised, so.
New restaurants you've got to put in, and it's gone.
And it's gone. And, and, and again, um, I do feel the way you feel. Uh, I do understand that the, the, there's processes and there's procedures that we need to go to, 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 to make change happen, to make these things happen. And it's not something that, that we have ignored, I, I guarantee you that, uh, the, the mayor's here, uh, he, he's actually been to, uh, their, their, their home office, their, their, uh, headquarters, uh, in Las Vegas, he's been there a couple of times. I know it's been a topic of conversation, I have been to their, their offices, I've been to Atlanta, I've talked to their corporate VP, so there's been a lot of conversation about the mall. Um, and again, as far as, uh, forcing them to do anything, it's kinda hard to force them to do anything because it's privately owned, but again, if we get involved as citizens, if we, as we come together as citizens, and I give you just, just one last point about the mall and how it correlates to things that happen throughout the country. I visited a city called Gaithersburg, Maryland, and they had a bunch of farmland. It was nothing, no one there, nothing. And, uh, a developer came in and, and did a few high-end shops, a little few retail shop, just, just a few, and all of a sudden, there was a lot of interest. He forced change, he forced people to drive twenty minutes, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes from the DC area, from Virginia, to come to Gaithersburg because they started building. If we can approach the owners of the mall to get that mindset as citizens, to saying, look, if you start making changes, start bringing in more retail, start giving us some, some kind of master plans of what, what do you wanna do with this mall, let us know, because again, um, I've never seen anything. I'm sure there's something out there, but they've never presented anything to me to say, here's our future plans for this mall and this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna cut the middle out, we're gonna go outside, we're gonna expand, we're gonna put a, 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 a parking deck. I've not heard any of those things, but I've had many conversations, and out of those conversations, I can tell you, those are the things that I've never heard, uh, that I'm wanting to hear. Uh, so again, um, it, it boils down to people getting involved, it boils down to people coming together as, as masses, as a community at large to say, hey, look, we're tired. You got, either gonna do something or sell it, one or the other, and, and have them make a decision, one way or the other. So again, I can get on soapbox about the mall all day, but I, I, I wanna digress from that.
You know, so what can you, about wearing some T-shirts and go to the county or whatever it is?
Absolutely, I think a great idea, bring it to the CRA. But again, uh, I wanna thank you guys for, for coming, and, uh, if you didn't take away, if you didn't get anything out of this meeting tonight, one thing I do want you to, to get out of this, and that is get involved, get connected, stay involved, join one of our boards, and you can affect change, you can affect policy, and start coming to some of our meetings, voicing your opinions, and you'll be amazed at how quickly things can change, uh, when citizens get involved. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you.